Input and action for the 2017-2018 school opening and closing times. Do we have someone who is Tanya Whitehurst?
So, to begin with, we want to just show a quick video that really has a lot of the research that is available. I just hit the wrong one. Sorry, Mike.
The American Academy of Pediatrics has said its advocates sometimes ruin high schools, be pushed back to eight per year later. Arnie Duncan says lessed students are ready to steal. Good news for teenagers, doctors want you to sleep then.
We know for a long time that adolescents do a very poor job early in the morning. We have ignored that research for the convenience of adults.
We know that insufficient sleep increases the risk of obesity. It increases the risk of type 2 diabetes. And it increases the risk of downstream cardiovascular, just like a blood pressure.
If you talk to any pediatrician, you talk to any public health official, you talk to any sleep researcher, and they will rattle off a long laundry list of the things that sleep does for the human body and the horrible effects that occur to people who don't get enough sleep.
Car crashes decrease up to 70% for just one hour in a shift in bell start times.
One less hour of weekday sleep is associated with significantly greater odds of suicide attempts and seriously serious suicide.
Isn't being a teenager difficult for adults without stacking the odds against our children or shortchanging them on the most important resources they need for strong mental health?
My grades right now, first period, I have a C.
Who's two to nine, stretches.
Doctor pushes us up every day to get out of bed.
Today I witnessed a kid and I third period fall asleep on his desk while the teacher was talking to everybody.
People were asleep in class all the time. This was a problem that affected everyone. It didn't just affect the students, it affected the teachers and thus the entire class was affected.
No matter how great your teachers are, how much fun they try to make it, if you're tired, you're not going to learn anything. During the class that I filmed of my APs history teacher, and she worked so hard to make school fun and to do attractive activities, but every single class, first period, probably about half the class was asleep.
We have very strong research demonstrating that high school kids' learning is negatively affected by starting before they're awake in the morning.
Because... ...cognitively, attention, ability to manage time, to make decisions, to make life on their own.
There's lots of research and again sort of common sense that a lot of teens feel struggle to get up at six in the morning to get up.
We need policymakers and practitioners to pay attention first to the research that we already have.
If we don't have our physical and mental health in check, the education the county provides us really has little meaning. Later school start times and bell school bell times can produce results that benefit to the entire student.
This is something that we can fix, that we can change. Grades improve, standardized test scores improve, that attendance goes up, our graduation rates go up, and every day when you fail to make a decision about this, there's a cost attached to it. And it's a cost to our child.
So I'm going to give you three more pieces of information. And some of the information that was in that video that's from the American Psychological Association is in this. This is different. What you have already is the chronic absenteeism study that we did here in Putnam County. This is some more research from across the nation. And there's three different pieces here.
Is that McKeever report in there?
No ma'am, I emailed the McKeever report to you.
Okay, yeah, I got that.
So, yes. But I just want to point a couple of things out, and then we actually have some principals here that are going to speak. When we had the study, the report of the chronic absenteeism study that we did when we got the results last week, this just really came to light. It's something that has been talked about for years. I remember being an assistant principal at Interlaken High School with Suzanne Mathie, and we pushed at that time to just allow West Putnam to let us be the pilot out there and try it. So I don't want to take anything away from them. I just want to point out a couple of things that's in the packets that I just gave you. And the one that is titled "Later School Start Times Promote Adolescent Well-Being", it really talks about the biological and psychological roots in adolescents that their brains just do not shut down until later at night. And so saying, well, they just need to go to bed earlier, they can't just go to bed earlier. And there's biological and psychological reasons for that, but they still need eight to 10 hours of sleep. And so I just think that's something that we really need to consider. But in this, it really talks about some of the benefits that they have observed from later high school start times. Increased attendance rates, decrease in disciplinary action, decrease in student-involved car accidents, increase in student GPA, increase in state assessment scores, increase in college admission test scores, increase in student attention, decrease in students sleeping during instruction, increase in quality of student-family interaction. So that's just a few things just from that. So there's so much information in here in the report from Science Daily. It just says that, let me get to the sentence. "Many people believe that school start times are one of the big reasons students do not get enough sleep. A CDC study found that 85.6% of U.S. high schools started before 8:30, which is the earliest time recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics." I mean, they recommend that it should not start before 8:30. So that's just some information that I wanted to present. You have the chronic absenteeism report, school by school, as well as the county. And any of the principals that are here that want to come up and speak on your behalf, they're all like grinning at me.
Got to have a buddy to come up here.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Jothia Bold, Middleton-Burney Elementary School. First off, I want to say that we kind of talked about this as a group at a principals' meeting. And there wasn't a dissenting voice at the time. And I don't know that there is one amongst principals right now because we have to kind of keep the focus on what we do. Schools are academic institutions. We have a lot of research that tells us that it's an academic bonus to have our older students starting a little bit later. There are other things to take into consideration. Student safety is one of the things that's been brought up. And I'll tell you, this morning, driving down to Middleton-Burney, I passed middle schoolers on the side of the road in the dark at, gosh, it was probably about 6:35, waiting for a bus. And that's not safe for middle schoolers, it's not safe for high schoolers, it's not safe for little children. And the more I think about it, the more I think that it's more likely for me as a parent to send my 15-year-old down to a dark, empty bus stop than it is for me to send my eight-year-old. It's not going to happen. Probably not my 15-year-old either. But what I guess I'm trying to say is I think that it would encourage more safe behavior to begin with, just that we go down and supervise our children at the bus stops.
Not just the little children.
Not just the little children, that's exactly right. Also, as a parent, I know that my six-year-old wakes up raring to go 6:30, she is ready to do something, welcoming the day. And that's because we're letting her stay a little bit later up. But I think the benefits definitely outweigh any of the problems. Now, I also have a unique perspective because I've been at schools where, oh gosh, a little background. We're also talking about adding some time to the school day. I'm very much in favor of that, not just because we need the extra academic time, but the fact is we need recess time in our schools, in elementary schools. I'm very passionate about teaching students social emotional skills. Their opportunity to practice social emotional skills is on the playground, unstructured play, not PE, not where there are rules, but where there's unstructured play, where they have to figure it out on their own. And I believe that having some extra time will help that. Having been at a school where there was extra time, out at Aquila, and starting late, we started at 9:15 and our students didn't get out until almost four o'clock, that last little piece of the day wasn't very effectively used. I heard a lot of parents complaining about the extra time because their little children got home very late. So it's not so much that our kids are at school too long, it's that our kids are getting home too late. This solves that problem too, and it gives us that extra little piece of time. Having been at both of those schools though, I'm sorry, I didn't finish that thought. Having been at Aquila and then at Mellon, where we had an extended day because we were a bottom 300 school, we had the extra time and we started early. Out at Aquila, we started late and it wasn't as effective. But at Mellon Elementary, with the added time that nobody else had, excuse me, other than Mosley, we had an opportunity to have math interventions at the end of the day. So that's between 1:55 and 2:15, and we were actually getting work done at the end of the day. At a late school, between 3:25 and 3:45, the cognitive levels of a seven-year-old at that point aren't exactly optimal for learning. And so I think that if we're really trying to make the best choice as an academic institution and see this as part of our vision and moving forward as a district, I think this is a great opportunity for us. We will all have to make changes. My wife at home told me, that doesn't work in my schedule, as far as getting up earlier and getting the kid to school earlier. And I told her, just like everybody else, we'll have to make adjustments. And they won't be easy, but we'll manage and we will make those adjustments. But in the meantime, what we have are students, little children, who aren't supervised at home, their parents are at work, and their older siblings are already at school. And so if we're starting at nine o'clock, we still have that unsupervised time for our little children. There are problems that we'll have to solve, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us. I'll stop blathering on.
Thank you, Joe.
Good afternoon. Ashley McCullough, Browning Pierce Elementary. I've had the unique opportunity, having been admin at Crescent City High, Beasley, Mosley, and now at Browning Pierce. So I've seen our high school students at Crescent City get dropped off of a bus at 6:30, often when they work late hours the night before in fields, having gotten on the bus before six and it be dark. I've witnessed at Mosley and here at Browning Pierce this year, parents who are trying to go to work that can't afford morning daycare drop their kids off before I'm supposed to supervise children. So we have about right now at Browning Pierce, anywhere from 50 to 60 kids who come in the morning before eight o'clock. I'm not supposed to supervise until 8:30, so most of us principals spend the first half of the year standing out there fussing at parents, which is kind of ridiculous because they have jobs to do and they see adults here and don't understand our rules. And so we've made a way to put them in computer labs early in the morning. Because believe me when I say, when kids are up at 7:30, they're ready to go. And you get about four good hours out of them in the morning. The way it is now, where we start around nine and have to run lunches at about 10:45, we really only get for some of our kids about two good hours before lunch. So I've definitely seen the benefits of trying it. It seems silly that we don't give it an effort for a couple of years and look at our own kids. Most other districts around the area, my own two children start later. It doesn't affect sports in that around the state, they aren't changing the times of sports events. Varsity sports, he's a basketball player, start at 7:30 whether you went to school at nine or 7:30 in the morning, which means he's not getting home till midnight and he's in an IB program. So he can do his work after practice in the evenings and he can clock another seven hours of sleep. I have another son who works. We have a lot of students in our community who work to help provide for their families, and most restaurants do not close up until after nine or 10. If they have any studying to do, it gives them an opportunity to get some sleep. So it does seem silly to me that we don't at least give it an effort. We can always readdress it in a couple of years if it doesn't work out. But I've not seen a district yet, from anything I'm reading and people I'm talking to, that have gone back after they've tried it. So anyway, appreciate your support. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Brian Helms, I'm the principal at Interlaken High School. So I'm just coming to you very quick, very simple. At a high school, we do a variety of things, and I'm going to talk to you mainly about absences that we have at our school. And you guys have seen the report. Our school right now sits at about 34%, which means about 240 kids have at least 19 absences or more. And I have about 67 kids that have 30-plus absences. And we do a variety of things to motivate students to get to school and to get there on time. But the bottom line is about 80% of my school rides the bus. So if they miss the bus, they don't come to school. And it's no matter how much I offer them, they're not going to come to school with them at the bus. Because there's nobody at home to take them, there's nobody at home to get them there. And so when I look at giving the kids extended time to sleep, this is something that we need to try. I think the data shows and the research shows that this is better for them as individuals. My other thing that I have is, for me, when I get to the buses at 7:10, because our students get off the bus at 7:10 every morning, those buses are waiting on me at 7:10 in the morning. And when those kids get off, I have a very good relations with a lot of my students. Normally, they don't speak to me in the morning, which I understand, I'm not a morning person either. But by second period, they're speaking to me and they're active. And so without the research, just looking at the students themselves every day in the trenches where we are, we see second periods better than first period. Just bottom line, just from observing them. And for me, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over, inspecting a different outcome. So if we don't do something to change, we can look at the eight counties that are around us that start at 9:15, and they do great things, and they're eight counties, there's a reason. And this might be something. Now, the 34%, I don't see going away right away. It's going to take time, but it might drop it to 20, which is a lot of kids we're affecting. And so I just, as a principal of a high school, my recommendation is to go to that later time. And it is up to you guys, but I just appreciate your time and effort that you guys do every day, because I wouldn't want your job for all King Midas's money. So I commend you guys very much, but thank you again so much for your time, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian.
JT Stout, principal, Palaka High School. As you saw in the report, 35% of Putnam County's high school students are chronically absent, so they've missed 10% or more, 19 days or more. At Palaka High, I think it's right at 39% that we're sitting at that. Tardies and absences are an issue. Dealt with a young lady today who lost her driver's license due to tardies and absences. And we had to explain to the parent that the 28 tardies that she has results in nine more absences in addition to what she already missed, and that's why now she's looking at not having her driver's license back until September. Because we don't have enough school for her to be here enough to get it back. So that later start time would happen. When you look at Palaka High School's chronic absenteeism report, and question three, what would help you come to school more, the underlying theme is coming to school later. Now, with that being said, we did a survey, and I'm not going to not let the students and teachers' voices be heard, because I did do the survey Friday, so to be transparent, I asked how many would like to have the later time, how many wouldn't like to have the later time. And out of all the responses, 51 teachers said no, five said yes, and 680 students said no, 70 said yes. So 90% of the students said no, they wouldn't want the later time. My interpretation of that is those are the 90 that are going to be there whether we start at nine or we start at 7:40. It's the 39% that are chronically absent and tardy that we're having the issue with. And if that means, just like Brian said, we could cut that percentage down in half by starting at a later time, that's fine. I know if my athletic director watches this later, he's not going to be happy with me. We had a good conversation today. And I understand where the sports are coming from. But as an academic institution, that's my first priority.
Absolutely.
And if this will improve our academics, then we need to give it a shot. And having a nine-year-old myself on Saturday mornings at 6:30 when she's up and ready to go and wants daddy to make pancakes, she can go to school at 7:40. So we'd be good.
Thank you, JT.
I'm Michelle Higginbotham, principal at Crescent City High School. I basically concur with everything that's been said here today. I did hand all of you some research and some articles in the red folder that you had on your desk waiting on you, that kind of also mirrors a lot of what we heard on the video clip. Also to think about, in addition to what we've already heard, with my school, I can give you the stats basically for what our average day of absences is right now. We're averaging about 70 students out, and I'm around 458 enrollment, that's about 15%. However, my tardies, and I am the earliest starting school in the district, I begin our day at 7:20, my students get out at 1:55. They go for seven periods a day. I walk in classrooms all the time, constantly waking up students. I ask them, why are you sleeping? I'm tired, miss. I'm tired, miss. Okay, go wash your face, come back in and get to work. We're testing these students at 7:30, eight o'clock in the morning. They're falling asleep on a regular day when they're able to collaborate with their partners, when they're able to talk, when they even have brain breaks and can get up and move in between periods. But when we sit them down for a standardized test, they can't do any of that. So if we continue, as JT said, to, or I'm sorry, Brian said, to continue in the same path, we're just creating insanity again. As I said, my average attendance, 70 kids out out of 458. My tardies, I average about 45, and it's getting closer to about 55 now with the fourth nine weeks, of kids coming in late. I stand up there every morning, ask them, why are you late? I overslept, I'm tired. Okay, I missed the bus. Which in my chronic absenteeism report, and you will see that broken down by my school, that's the reason for my students that completed that chronic absenteeism survey, 88% was transportation issues. And it's because a lot of my parents do work in the fields, and they are not there, they share vehicles, they might only have one. So if that student does miss it, and they may live out in Georgetown, Lake Como, they're not going to walk. So they miss. Just this week, we had a student that is a senior. We are working with her, she's kind of fallen between the cracks, to try to get her identified for some support through students with disabilities. She was late on Monday. She woke up, my secretary went and picked her up. They were going to begin the testing that day. And she's a senior. Yesterday, they were going to complete the test, again, she was late. I think my dean had to go pick her up yesterday. So if we're going to continue down this road, then we need to be able to say, yeah, we did it, but we did it for maybe the wrong reasons, but it's time we stop looking at that and do something for the right reasons. And our kids are worth it. Our academics are worth it. And like Ashley said, why not try it? It's not going to hurt anything. How can we expect a rise to number 34 in the state when we're not going to do things to change it?
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Mary Piazza, QI, Roberts. And I make the fourth of the four high school principals that is advocating for the later start time. And for me, it's very simple, it's two issues. At QI, we're very driven by data and research, and this research is very clear that it would help. And just from a practical point of view, we start at 7:40, and because of our remote location and the bus ride, students have to get up 5:30, 5:00, it's just so early. It is. And we have a lot of problems with tardies, especially during first period. So we think this would help. So we hope you will think about our reasons that we've advocated for.
Thank you, Mary.
So I just want to finish with this part of it, just with one quote from the article from Science Daily. And when I read this, I was just like, yeah, this is exactly what we need to focus on. "Our nation's future is literally dependent upon the physical, mental, and educational excellence of our high school students. The most recent national surveys show that less than one-third of our high school students get enough sleep as recommended by the leading national authorities. This is of concern since inadequate sleep has been linked to worsened mental health, decreased ability to learn, increased obesity rates, increased motor vehicle accidents, and even increased substance abuse."
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
Would any of you board members like to have some input?
I'd ask Rodney for something.
That's what I wanted to hear from.
I had, I just, I'd been talking to bus drivers about some things, and I said, could you do a quick survey? Because my concern, of course, is safety. And several of them said, wow, we have, especially in South Putnam, my district, they, the majority of the older siblings get the younger children off the bus. They told me 75% of that. And so I was like, they just couldn't believe, well, who's going to get the kids off the bus? I said, so I asked him just to do a quick survey, if that was something that was, he was able to help out with.
I sent two questions out to the bus drivers at all three areas. The first one was, when you go to bus stops, do you have parents, siblings, or both? In Crescent City, out of the 14 reports, 12 of them say that both parents and siblings are there, and then one person said just siblings. So you're looking at 13 out of 14. And then this, Palaka, there were 11 out of 20 that says both siblings and parents are there at the bus stops. And in Interlaken, there were 17 out of 23 that said both, and then two just said that other siblings are there. The second question was, if a sibling is at the bus stop, what percentage of the time are they there? 25, 50, 75, and 100? In Crescent City, two said 25%, five said 50%, six said 75%, one said 100%. In Palaka, seven was at 25%, four at 50%, one at 75%. And in Interlaken, six had 25%, seven had 50%, five had 75%, and one had 100%. So if you look at that, there are siblings that are there, but I'm not sure if the percentage is great enough to warrant that, you know, parents expect older siblings to be at the bus stop to take care of their kids overall. But that's the two questions. Right.
Right, okay.
Mr. Simons, if we were to go with this flip-flop on the times.
Yes.
You know, it would seem that it would work out for the bus schedule and routes and drivers. Will it, will it cause more problems, less problems, or just the same old problems?
Hopefully it wouldn't cause any more problems. We could have the same problems when you're looking at the number of people. Actually, in some situations, we've looked at getting the two other elementary schools that have had different start times back in line with the other ones. We have some drivers that just drive secondary based on the length of the route. If we go to elementary first, we would be able to use them on a short elementary run before they have to go out to do the secondary run. That would help us out both morning and afternoon. Because the longer run for secondary is in the afternoon at second, so they've got plenty of time between runs, they've got plenty of time after that. We'll still have the issue with athletics and trying to cover routes. It doesn't matter who goes first, when you start, so we'll still have those issues. Hopefully, we can get additional subs. I know here in the past few weeks, we have had several people that are interested, so hopefully we will make some progress and be in a good situation when school starts.
Thank you.
So that's a positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to comment.
I'd like for you to.
Is it time?
Yes.
Change is so difficult. It really is, and I think that's one of the things we hesitate to do here in Putnam County. And yet, we need to change, folks. I mean, really, everything's changing and we need to change. I raised four kids, and I agree, the young ones are up and raring to go early in the morning, and the older ones want to stay up late and want to sleep later. So to me, it's, without even looking at these, it's common sense that we send the older kids later and the younger kids earlier. I know it's going to upset a lot of, a lot of parents because they're going to have to change too. They're going to have to make other arrangements. But it's almost going to be like, I'm thinking, if I had kids in elementary school and all of a sudden, it's almost going to be like you're calling your friends and things will happen together. People work things out together. We're about educating kids, period, period. That's all we're supposed to, sorry, but my sports and church on Wednesday and impacting working parents, those are the three big reasons I've heard not to do this. And I just, none of those reasons is good enough to me to not do it, to not try it anyway.
And the research that I received from some that called me, I really appreciate that, you know who you are, plus I Googled myself, and the research that I read supports what the principals are saying.
Overwhelming.
And I too am concerned about the education of our children. This is one of the things that our superintendent ran on. And not only that, this is what we should be concerned about as citizens in order to make changes in our dis- make changes in our district, to educate our children, to give them the best opportunities possible. And anytime the ones that are in the trenches, like these principals, have come to us and said, "We are willing to do what it takes to make our schools better, to help our children to receive the rest and do the things that they need to do," whenever they're bold enough to step out and to look at those reasons, we want to go for that, because we pledged to our parents to give our children the best education possible. And if the older ones are asleep, and if we can get that extra hour where they're sleeping and they come to class, and the research is supporting that, it does affect the home, the children aren't as grouchy as they are. So, I concur with Ashley, as she said, "Let's give it a try, and let's work together as a community to make it happen." And we understand, our parents are working, and we understand how people perceive our district as being poor, whatever, but we can make this change and pull it together. And that's what I say.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Ms. Cummings?
Although I'm not going to ever say the research is wrong, I mean, what teenager wouldn't say they're more productive with a little more sleep? Although 90% of the high school kids didn't want the time change, that's surprising.
At one school.
But if you look at the responses, and this is really what I looked at, the, all the surveys and all the things, if all of the recommendations that we got from these great reports of our county, they don't say change the time to earlier, they say establish district and school attendance goals, share with all stakeholders, do data collection, change these things. So, there's a lot of things that I felt, I spent a lot of time looking through the research, and the thing that was the most interesting to me, and I don't know, Superintendent, if you, I know this is a goal, but when you look at the open-ended responses, are there other reasons listed that you missed school? And it's such, at IHS, two out of 43 said, "I sleep in." Two out of 43, that's not even 1%. So, I guess I'm just saying, I understand research, but I'm looking at our local research, and I mean, we spend a lot of time and energy, I mean, I know that you looked at all these reports. What would help you come to school more at Palacka High on question three, eight of 70? So, right over 10% said, one, as I'd say, "Go to sleep earlier," I wouldn't say that would be affected, but "Start later." So, out of 70 responses, eight. So, I'm not convinced that starting later, because if you look at the responses, I talked to Judge Christensen, who is very, very expert in everything, truancy judge, sees these people all the time. I said, "Do you feel that there, this is going to affect? You want to lower truancy, correct? Is that the goal, or is it graduation rate? What's the goal?"
Both.
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
All of it.
So, we want to increase graduation rate, and we want to lower truancy. So, I said, "Do you see?" And she says, "There is absolutely no evidence of any correlation by changing start times." That was her opinion, and I respect her opinion. She's very, very educated, very, and sees it a lot. So, she just encouraged me to, you know, focus on the importance of school and attendance, and how, she like, "Well, I'll tell you the thing that works the most, when I've thrown, you know, the, the parents of the high school kids that I can't do anything with them, when I throw them in jail, they don't come back." And I was like, "Well, yeah, that would be, you know, wonderful if we could do that with our chronic truancy, you know, parents often." But I guess the thing is that these responses at Crescent City, I mean, I looked at them a long, so, again, IHS, are there other reasons that you listed that you missed school? Two out of 43 say, "I like to sleep, and I sleep in." So, I guess when we're making this big of a decision, it's, I look at the data. This is all data, this is not opinions, this is all data. I talked to the bus drivers, and again, 75% of them, but these documents that we spend in these recommendations out of one, two, they gave us great ideas. I mean, they're saying, "These are the recommendations that we want you to, the common student barriers towards improving attendance." And really, I mean, none of them really, they just talk about recognition of good and improved attendance. One other thing that really bothers me, we're not doing the automated call, and we're not letting teacher, parents know at several of the schools, they don't get a call. When those kids don't show up, we're not using that, and that's a shame. That is a downright shame. And some of them do, but they don't, it doesn't happen on a, unfortunately...
All those schools, raise their hands, y'all were doing that, right? Yeah.
Right, so there's not, it's just not consistent to where the parents get a call. For whatever reason, maybe it's not documented, and that bothers me, because then the parents don't even know it's an issue, because they're not getting a call. Whether or not it's the system, I mean, it's something that has to be done more communicating with parents, because if you look at all these recommendations, they all say, "Your stakeholders have to be involved with this. Your stakeholders have to have attendance goals." And I have not had my phone quit ringing, and they all, I've not had one person, they said, I mean, it's just accountability, and it's family involvement, parent involvement, they're all saying, you know, "We need more of that." And honestly, when you, when you look at these questions about what would help you come to school more, food was better, more activities, I hate school, my teachers are mean, I mean, you know, you look at high schools, and you take it with a grain of salt.
Things you can't change.
Right, exactly. There's a lot you can't change, but the minority, the least answer is, "Start school later." If you really spend time looking at, "These are the kids we're targeting." And if they honestly answered these correctly, this is the thing that, you know, I'm like, "Well, we're asking the kids," that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it. I know that the board's saying, "Hey, let's try research, research grade," but I don't think, unfortunately, it's some kind of magic bullet that are, I mean, hey, we'll give it a try, but my thing, my vote is dependent upon safety and the number of parents that are so upset about, and honestly, they're going to have those kids sit alone at home.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask our community, ask our parents, because it does take a village, and our parents are going to have to really...
Step up to the plate.
Step up, and they are doing a lot, but we're going to ask them, kind of like Kathy said, they're going to have to change their routine, and like Joe said, who's going to send their child to sit at the bus stop by themselves? I mean, we need to protect our kids, and nobody wants a child to sit in the dark at the bus stop by themselves, so we're going to have to ask the parents to really work with us on that, to make it work.
Nikki, what I'm hearing you say is that, there's all this other research that we've presented with, but you're going to ignore that and do what the kids want, or the kids say.
No, no, no. I'm looking at the, okay, we did a survey that actually, the reasons for chronic absenteeism, and in the last, they make recommendations, if you look through those...
The students.
No, 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 this is the actual USF DOE, open, not, I'm not talking about the open-ended, I'm talking about the recommendations.
Right.
These recommendations are not from the students. I was reading the open-ended questions, but I was actually looking at, work with, like, they actually, "Work with stakeholders to establish alternative transportation options such as carpool, bus passes, late bus. Consider ways to use automated classes..."
That's what they'll be doing.
That's what their parents will have to do.
Right, right, and these are all things that, the recommendations to, from, the intervention that was the project.
Okay, Tanya would like to address.
First of all, I just want to kind of explain the study, so that there's not any misunderstanding of what you have in front of you, okay? This was a study that was done, we asked, students took the survey in our secondary schools, with the exception of QI Roberts, and it was targeting students who were chronically absent during the 15, 16 school year, and they took it November, December of this past, of this school year. And the first part of that survey was a lot of, like, multiple-choice type answers, and if you will look at the Putnam County overall results, that was the first one that I had emailed, on page four, it lists the top five reasons as to why they do not come to school. And the fourth one is the school schedule stating later start time, shorter classes, more time to pass between classes. All of the students did not answer an open-ended, it was, the open-ended piece was not required. The multiple-choice part was required, okay? And I just want to, I just want to say that I don't think anyone is standing here saying that the only reason we're asking for secondary to start late is because of attendance. It's one piece of a big puzzle that we are trying to put together and make it successful. And attendance is just one piece of that, that will have an impact. It's not going to solve the complete attendance issue. We understand that. There's, it's so much deeper than that, but that, we're requesting that because there's so much more that's at stake than just attendance.
What do you, like, I mean, what are your other, what are your goals? He said, I mean, Dr. Sterns, he said, "Graduation rate and absentee."
Graduation rate will increase when students are alert and awake in class, and they can actually learn and pay attention to the instruction that is happening.
Score tests will improve.
School, right.
Score tests.
School, right, yeah, great.
If you look at that research that I have, that we've given you...
Not necessarily for absenteeism.
That's one, that's one benefit that we are hoping that we will get to see as a, as a result of this. We are not, that was not the whole, this has been talked about for years before we ever did the absentee study.
Of course, it's the same old problem.
We talked about this in the 90s.
Okay. I would like to say something, too.
Oh, you don't get to say.
And what Kathy just mentioned, I mean, we talked about later start times for high school students in the 90s, and it's something that I've always been interested in. This research is not new. This research has been there for a long time, but we've never done it, and now, you know, I think now is the time. I've gotten only four phone calls, I've gotten a couple of emails, but two of those phone calls were in favor of changing the start times for our high school students and middle school students to start later, and our younger ones to start earlier, so they could participate in dance and after-school activities, softball practice, you know, and I've got one friend, she's about to beat me up over it. But that's not the only reason. There's, there's just, I worked in a high school for 32 years, and I taught English, which I know is not the most interesting subject to a lot of kids, but they don't get enough sleep. And they are going to sleep in English, and it doesn't matter if I pour cold water on them, or tickle them, or kiss them on the head, that they're going to sleep. And I resorted to all of, I sang to them.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, that was pretty bad. But I want to say something, as far as parents being inconvenienced, parents are always inconvenienced, and it's hard to change, but let me give you my example, because I was inconvenienced, but I had to do what was best for my child. And she had to get up at 5:15 with her mom every day for eight years to get on a school bus that drove her to St. Augustine to Florida School for the Deaf and Blind to attend school. She was very young. Yeah, maybe she caught a nap on the bus, but she went to school all day, participated in sports after school, sometimes didn't get home till 5:30, 6:30 on the bus, or if she participated in a game, I went to the game, and we didn't get home until 11 at night, most nights of the week. You do what is best for your children, and if you are inconvenienced, I'm sorry. I would also like to say that people complain about education in Putnam County all of the time. Parents complain about it, that school stinks, those teachers are not good, but when we, as a county, want to do something to try to increase the graduation rates or improve education in Putnam County, they're the first to complain. I'm sorry if you're going to be inconvenienced, we all experience inconvenience. I, too, am concerned about safety for our children, our young ones, but you know what? We'll find a way, those parents will find a way. If they have to take a week at a time and say, "I'll stay with them this week at the bus stop till it gets here," you do it next week. We will find a way. And that's all I have to say on the subject.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the open and closing times for schools marked D, with the elementary schools going early and the secondary schools going later.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Yes.
Three to one.